Everyone could take a moment and silence their cellphones. We'll welcome you to the City Council meeting this evening. And if you would, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Which flag? Which flag am I? This evening, we do not have any proclamations. And in just a moment, I will need a motion to continue Item C on the public hearings calendar to April 26. But first, I wanted to say that I was really glad to see everyone pull together and get us through this snowstorm. And the city staff did a great job clearing the roads and working with DOT. So, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to continue Item C on the public hearings agenda until April 26?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second? All right. I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to continue Item C on the public hearings agenda until April 26? No? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Any item that anyone wants to have considered separately or has a question about?
Yes. I'd like to consider Item I separately.
Okay. That is the resolution to support the Ban the Box Initiative. All right. Questions, comments, or a motion regarding the remainder of the consent agenda?
Would you approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda items A through H? We're going to do Item I in just a moment. Okay? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have Item I. And I'm not sure if we have anyone from staff on Item -- we do have someone from staff on Item I. But if Councilman Young would like to speak about Item I, this would be the time.
I would like to -- well, we can hear staff first.
If -- do you want to just give kind of a brief explanation of Item I, resolution to support the Ban the Box Initiative?
Shannon, if you will, just introduce yourself and your position.
Certainly. I'm Shannon Barrett. I'm the HR manager. The HR manager. And Ban the Box is a nationwide initiative, something that the HR department has been looking at for a while, doing research on. And essentially, what it does is it allows us to consider the applicant's job qualifications first. We will still be providing background checks, but we're doing that later in the process. And so, again, it provides more of an equal playing field for applicants.
Okay.
Thank you. I think this resolution, this pending resolution embodies a roadmap that our city will collectively follow. And hopefully municipalities and local governments around the state will continue to follow the direction that this Ban the Box Initiative is moving. I think formerly incarcerated families to heal and move forward. Everybody deserves opportunity for gainful employment, and that's how our communities grow collectively. This is a movement that folks here locally have had a lot of interest in. There are some folks out there in the audience that have worked very hard. Dee Williams is one. And there are others in the community that have pushed for this because it is the right thing to do. I'd like to, at some point in time, offer them the opportunity to speak on this as well.
If you'll make a motion, we have a second.
I'd like to make a motion for Ms. Williams to approach the mic and --
Or if you'll make a motion to approve the item.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution of the Ban the Box Movement.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And if there's anyone who would like to comment on the motion, if you'll step forward and watch the lights on the lectern, you'll have three minutes to speak.
I hope to be done, and thank you for letting me come. My name is Dee Williams. I just want to express my appreciation, first to Councilman Keith Young, for helping us with this. And also, I don't want to leave anybody out, but Mission Hospital, Mission Health Systems, and Toby Kay, who is our partner here, got them to drop the box off their application. And as you know, that's 10,000-plus employees in western North Carolina and nine hospitals. So, that's major. Also, we have President of United Community Development here, and a number, Priscilla Hjai, who's a community activist, Benny Miller, who's retired USA Special Forces, who is also a member of the nonprofit that participated. I want to also mention Brent Bailey, who is a staff member for Buncombe County Reentry Council. They've been our partners and our lead organization. So, you have many people who've put in yeoman's work here. And also, I want to talk about the community center, the Wesley Grant Southside Center that's been just a fixture in letting us meet there. And we have folks, community meetings with over 20 people almost every time. So, know that this is just the start, and our next stop is Buncombe County. We have a committee that wants to work on an ordinance, so you may hear. And my next step is to train people who have been convicted to take the lead. So, thank you so much. We look forward to working with you. And also, our jobs initiative, Look for Us, Mission Health Systems is a partner in that, and Census Track 9, our distressed census track. Just watch us, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you so much. And could we have a copy of that? Because I would like to present it to the county. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay. Anyone else?
I have a quick comment. And that is, I've heard from a number of people who are critical of this idea. And I keep reminding them that we used to consider our prisons as correctional institutions and realized that when people had served their time, they had done that, and hopefully they found a better way to live their lives. And I think this is a really important step, to let people get through that application process and then explain their situation to an employer. So, I'm glad we're moving forward on this.
Just really quickly, I appreciate the leadership, Dee, and your group has shown, and Councilman Young. But I also want to give a shout out to Cecil on this, because you brought it to HCD some time ago and have been a champion internally for it as well. And so, I'm really glad to be able to support it tonight.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have completed the consent agenda. Thank you, everyone who came for items on the consent agenda. Next, we have a -- we have one presentation tonight, the Equitable Development Report, Building Blocks for Sustainable Communities. And we have Sasha Vertunsky. Vertun -- I said S right? Vertens?
Vertunsky.
Vertunsky! Our whole planning department here challenging me with these names. It's a rule. To work in the planning department, you have to have an --
You have to have a specific name or a specific years.
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sasha Vertunsky, urban planner with the Planning and Urban Design Department. I'm here tonight to present to you the report on equitable development, held last summer, the workshop we had. Sorry? The EPA's Office of Sustainability announced in the fall of 2014, the Building Blocks for Sustainability Grant Program. One of the areas for these technical assistance grants was equitable development. And the staff pursued this opportunity, and Asheville was awarded the grant in early 2015. These workshops are typically a day and a half long. So, but before we go into the workshop results, I just want to quickly put this into context for you. So, first, what is equitable development? There's a lot of definitions out there, and the one before you is the one that the EPA brought to the community. And I would summarize it as approaches and strategies to ensure that everyone, especially that those that are disenfranchised or underserved, are included in decision-making and also have the opportunity to thrive. The Ban the Box thing was actually a great segue into this. Another way to look at it is, as our city grows and there's increased investment, how can we make sure that the entire community is benefiting? We also want to put the equitable development workshop in context in terms of other city initiatives and projects. Over the years, the city's had a number of projects where we've listened to the community about their concerns and also working with the community on planning processes. Oh, sorry. From the West Riverside Weed and Seed Program to the current Ban the Box Initiative, the themes of equitable development have been present in city projects. One of these, the East of Riverway Tiger 2 process, focused on Census Track 9, which is maybe one of the most vulnerable areas of our city. This area spans from Hillcrest Apartments to the West End Klingman Avenue Neighborhood, River Arts District, South French Broad, Erskine Livingston, South Side, to Walton Street, AB Tech, Lee Walker Heights, and Mission Hospital. So, during the East of Riverway process, residents and artists raised concerns about gentrification, changing demographics, rising rents, and rising property values. In response, the city funded a small study called Alternatives to Gentrification. And the city -- the study had two purposes, to investigate what data was out there about the area, and also to bring forward potential strategies. The study looked at a number of data sources and found that, yes, indeed, changes are happening in the east of the Riverway area, including rising property values. The report also put together some potential strategies that the community could use to help preserve existing residents and artist space. When the announcement for the building blocks grant opportunity was made, the Alternatives to Gentrification report was only a few months old. So, city staff saw it as a way to follow up on that study. The goal of the workshop was to educate the community about equitable development, including best practices from around the country, and to hear from the community about how they see this fitting into Asheville. The team from the EPA came to town. We took them on a tour of the area, and we had an evening meeting at the Dr. Wesley Grant Southside Center. And I think actually several of you were there at that meeting. At the meeting, the team gave a presentation about equitable development, and then engaged the attendees into a brainstorming session. The following day, we had a smaller group of approximately 40 community stakeholders and city staff from a variety of departments. And again, we talked about what equitable development is, and then engaged attendees into a brainstorming session. And then from that, we developed -- there were four themes that were developed that we discussed in smaller groups, and these are just some pictures. In the end, participants understood what equitable development was and understood best practices and came up with some ideas about how we could move our community forward. And all of those are summarized in the report, which you received. I do want to also add in here that the EPA team also added in some of their ideas in this process, and that really, there are roles for everyone in this. This is not all City of Asheville goals. There's roles for anchor institutions, community nonprofits, citizen groups, and nonprofits and, you know, and local government, but not just the city. So, the report and the brainstorming focused around four areas, and each of those had a small group meeting. So, the first one was improving community engagement and enhancing communication. There's a suggestion in the report about a new collaborative group that would help foster communication and potentially new collaborations and ideas that may or may not happen. There's also recommendations around improving staff, communication with community groups. Current examples that in -- there are several historically African-American neighborhoods that have been meeting to talk about community-based economic development strategies. That's not a city-led process, but that's something that's happening in our community that fits into this framework. An upcoming opportunity will be the Comprehensive Plan, where, you know, the city will engage with residents and really talk about the future of development and how that may impact them. We know that's a big concern for a lot of folks. The second topic was preserving existing and provide more affordable housing choices within east of the Riverway neighborhoods. Among these recommendations are ideas around partnerships to increase workforce development and development of mixed-use projects that offer both affordable housing and commercial space. And a great example of this is the Glen Rock at 372 Depot, where there's affordable units and commercial space, and they're reaching folks who are below 60% of the area median income, which is pretty great for our community. Potential opportunity, which would not be city-led opportunity, is a community land trust is in this report. Those are usually community-based nonprofits, where community members come together and talk about and work on a strategy to develop permanently affordable housing. The third idea here, and I'm not a big fan of this wording anymore, but strengthen the existing neighborhood through promotion of local investment and community-building commitments by existing and new community institutions and businesses. So, what this is really about is investment in our community. In North Carolina, we're somewhat limited in our tools to require these investments, but there's still the opportunity to work on these. And one example I thought of after I'd already turned this in is that, you know, Mr. McKibben's agreement with U to provide an investment in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund and to provide living wages for full-time employees is an example of a business investing in our community. So, that's what that language means. Another example is green opportunities, working with local employers to place their trainees with jobs in local businesses. An opportunity in this area is that when the city, or county, or other major institutions embark on major construction projects, we should really be thinking about how can we ensure local folks get those jobs. We can't require it by North Carolina law, but I think there's an opportunity to work with contractors and identify the barriers and figure out how we can make that happen to the best we can. The fourth area is preserve community identity by promoting the arts community and celebrating local African-American history. A really easy example of this is the Town Branch Greenway will incorporate local history along the trail with educational signage. So, users of that trail will be engaged directly with the history of the Southside community, and will learn about it. We also know that coming up with the RadTip project, we have some public art dollars that have been set aside, and we have an opportunity to engage local artists with community members and help connect the community through art. So, finally, staff, we've distributed the report to workshop participants, and it'll be available on the website fairly soon, probably in the next day or two. We want to create a place where it's easy to find on the website. Staff will analyze the report to determine what's feasible in North Carolina. And we're also going to continue to incorporate equitable development practices and values into our projects. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, one thing I want to note is that Housing and Community Development Committee will be taking up the community land trust issue in next month's meeting. Sasha's correct in saying that it's not generally local governments who lead those efforts, but there may be a role in municipal government to help convene those efforts. And we're going to be examining that next month at HCD. Thanks for mentioning green opportunities being there. This -- municipal government has supported them for many years now, especially through community development block grant funds, and I anticipate that partnership continuing to grow and strengthen. I wonder if, Sasha, if you can remind us kind of what's in the works in the Southside neighborhood and east of the Riverway in regards to Livingston Street and planning efforts there?
There is actually going to be an upcoming meeting, a public meeting with the community around Livingston Street. We're working on a complete streets project as a part of the RadTip. We've had several community workshops on that and gotten feedback. It's really designed to make that road a lot safer. People really can speed down that road right now. It's providing bicycle facilities and better walking facilities so that kids in the neighborhood, and not just, but so anybody can really use that roadway. So, I do know there's a public meeting coming up in February around those issues.
Great. I'll really look forward to hearing what folks in the neighborhood have to say about that, and whether there's an interest in looking at alternative zoning models as well to allow for more of that community business that folks are wanting to see grow up in that area. It's something that I'd be interested in exploring and being able to help work towards some of that. I'm going to be bringing forward a proposal in the near future around being able to help provide loan capital for minority businesses here in the city. And it seems to me a really great focus area, especially where you've been able to have all this community engagement. I wonder if there's any -- I haven't -- we haven't had an update in a while, so it may be the same. But there was discussion about the Ice House property down in the River Arts District. It's currently city-owned. As far as the future of that, there has been -- there had been discussion about Artist Live Work, about other kind of affordable elements to it. And I don't know if that's moved at all, or if we've got so many things going on in the River District that we're kind of waiting to get through some projects before we take that on.
I was looking to see if Stephanie was sitting behind me. I'm not sure. I think we're, you know, we're in the middle of this form-based code process, and I think we want to get that squared away to some extent.
We've got a lot of, lot of things going on.
Because that will definitely influence what the city would build on that piece of property, but.
Briefly, if I'd just touch on that, you know, that what we are establishing with the final design approval and moving ahead with RadTip is where the alignment's going to be. And then, so then you establish what that ice property's limits are. We've done conceptual planning at this point, but really confirming where the road's going to be, how much square footage you have to develop, how it's going to be oriented toward the road, the railroad, and overpass, and those kind of things. And then, it's preparing the land then for private development or city RFP development. And so, getting those variables of what the size of the land is, when will the infrastructure be completed? Because nobody wants to open a major commercial or public enterprise in the middle of a major roadway project. And so, nailing those things down then does -- it leads to the development process.
Okay. Thanks for that, Gary. I just wanted to double-check on where we were in process there. I also wanted to mention that in the -- in regards to leadership development that the report talks about, one of the partners that I didn't see listed was possibly being able to partner with Leadership Asheville as far as being able to kind of open some doors to some of these leadership promotion avenues that are already in existence, but being able to open some doors for people would be something I'd be interested in. And then in regards to heritage, it seems like a great initiative for the African-American Heritage Commission to be aware of and for the Public Arts and Cultural Commission to be aware of. Help them maybe work that into their workflows for the coming year.
Absolutely. And in the matrix in the report, they're both in there.
Great. Thanks.
Sure. Anyone else? Back away. Thank you for the presentation. Okay. That's the only item we have under presentations and reports. The first item under our public hearings agenda is a public hearing to consider a substantial amendment to the 2015-16 Consolidated Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds. And I have here that Heather, yep, is going to do this. Heather Dillashaw, please. Please step forward.
Good evening. You have before you a staff report about the reallocation of 15-16 home funds. These are funds that we do have in hand technically. They're in our federal treasury account. They were not able to be committed to development projects that were -- that could not move forward because of tax credit awards not happening. It's a short story. And so, what the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium Board requested staff to do was to open the application cycle back up. In doing so, we received multiple applications. You'll see that on the -- in short form here, with the applicant and the amount requested. As in, every time we do this, we had more requests than we could fund with the amount available. What you will see on the last column is the board's recommendation for funding with the existing funds. The good news about these funds, as I said, is as soon as we can get this resolution passed, we can commit them, and those projects can move forward. You'll see me again in a couple of months with 16-17 funding, but these funds we have right now, and we need to get them spent so these units can get on the ground. I have noted just the number of units that will go on the ground with these funds, which is good for the whole region. There are two projects in Henderson County, one in Madison County, and two in Buncombe County.
And remind people of the service area, the area that you --
The service area for the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium is Buncombe County, Madison County, Transylvania County, and Henderson County. And the consortium board is made up of municipalities and constituents from that four-county region, and Councilman Smith is the chair of that.
Is the Housing Assistant Corporation item? Where is that?
That's in the city of Hendersonville.
Okay.
It's a great parcel that is very close to downtown. It's going to be a mixed-income development. It was one of the original applications that went in for tax credits and got denied, but they came back with a proposal to continue with the project with different financing and more units, actually. The original proposal was only for 60 units, and this one's for 78, mixed income.
Does anyone have any questions? We'll need a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing a substantial amendment. Is it just one vote? Number one of the city's 2015-16 Consolidated Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So move.
And wait, I'm forgetting. I probably need to open the public hearing first. So, any -- I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing, and now I will entertain a motion.
Let's do it, Perf.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. The second item and last item on our public hearings agenda is a public hearing to consider a modified conditional zoning site plan for property located at 329 Rockwood Road for the development of a 108-room hotel contained in a seven-story building with associated parking and site work. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. As the mayor has indicated, this is a request to amend a previously approved highway business conditional zoning and the associated site plan for a new seven-story hotel. This original approval was back in October of 2013. The project site is located off of Rockwood Road on the edge of the city's jurisdiction in South Asheville. And I'm going to just zoom in maybe a little on the -- on the site vicinity map in the corner there. And you can see that the area that's in gray is -- represents the city's jurisdiction, and then the white is outside of our jurisdiction. So, you can see how close the subject property is to the edge of the jurisdiction. Also, since we're looking at the vicinity map, I want to point out the project's relative close proximity to the Asheville Regional Airport, which is just across I-26, located The subject property is a speculatively graded two-acre parcel that has access through a shared drive, which also serves the restaurant property to the east. The site rises in elevation approximately 20 foot -- 20 feet from the entrance of the driveway to the top of the -- to the top of the driveway, where it kind of flattens out into a level building pad. Most of that elevation is gained through the use of two moderately-sized retaining walls, which are already existing on the property and kind of flank the edges of the driveway. So, it's kind of terraced as the driveway winds between the two retaining walls. The 2013 site plan that was approved shows how that site was proposed to be developed with the parking for the hotel, and you can see the hotel footprint there and its relationship to the existing driveway. Back in 2013, as I mentioned, this was approved. It did not get built, however, but conditional zonings are good for two years. And so, the applicant continued to work, and they found a new flag. And that is the primary reason for the requested amendment today. You might want to say what a flag is. It's the brand of hotel. So, the original was for a Holiday Inn Express, and the new flag is Hyatt Place. So, you can see that this is the new site plan. It is substantially similar, almost identical, to the previously approved plan. The footprints have changed slightly. You can kind of maybe look at them side by side. It might help a little bit to kind of compare. The footprint has expanded a little bit with the Hyatt Place, and that represents an increase in square footage, specifically 10,893 square feet from the original 60,474 square feet up to the currently proposed 71,367 square feet. Also associated with that increase in square footage is an increase in the number of -- total number of rooms from the original 100 rooms to now being proposed at 108 rooms. There's some minor changes to some of the parking and the hardscaped area around the So, the building elevations that are currently proposed with the project. So, the building elevations that are currently proposed with the project. There was a previous modification approved in 2013 for height, which remains in place and caps the height of the building at 82 feet 8 inches, which is a 22-foot 8-inch increase from the 60 feet, which is normally the height limit in the Highway Business Zoning District. The modification that is already in place is proposed to remain unchanged. In reviewing the building elevations, you can kind of see you've got your main hotel lobby on the first floor, five stories of your hotel rooms, and then the increase in height allows for a seventh-story sort of rooftop amenity area. And, yes, and I mentioned that that kind of is one of the main reasons for the existing height modification. And that concludes my summary and my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions, or you may wish to hear from the applicant.
Yeah, so, just for clarification, this was already approved back in 2013. They just happened to find a new flag to represent them, I suppose, and they've just added eight more rooms.
Yes, and square footage, a little over 10,000 square feet. Okay, we will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? You might want to ask from the applicant. Oh, I'm sorry. Is the applicant, does the applicant, you're the applicant, okay. All right. Applicant, you are welcome.
My name's Justin Church with Blue Ridge Environmental in Wilkes-Barre, and we're the civil engineer for the project, and we're here representing the developer. And as staff has reported, this is basically the same project. After we received approval in the fall of 2013, the developer ran into some issues with the franchise, and they were not able to complete that transaction. So, it's taken this long to get another franchise in place. And because of that, each franchise has their own prototypes, and that sort of necessitated the building changing a little bit. So, just in an effort to be completely transparent, that's why we're back.
Thank you.
Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Yes.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Timothy Sadler, and I actually am just wondering, is it possible to ask for additional conditions at this point?
The conditions under conditional zoning have to be ones that are agreed upon by both the council and the applicant. So, you know, technically it's possible, but it would have to be an agreement by both for them to be effective.
So, if this council is interested in seeing additional conditions attached to this project, I think that, you know, it's certainly something that should be considered. We have a brand-new city council and different objectives. And, you know, I would just like to see some of the carbon emission goals that we have, taking a hard look at, you know, with this project, if there's anything we can do to ask the applicant for building a better building that'll reduce CO2 emissions. And also, one thing that hotels often don't do is look to source their food that they bring into their establishment locally. So, another condition we might ask the applicant to consider is to prioritize procuring local food for the project. That's my comment.
Thanks. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you have, yes, a question? Looks like a question.
Shannon, I'm having a hard time remembering, and maybe you can refresh my memory. Generally, when we're offering a height variance or some other gift to the developer over and above our zoning standards, do we generally seek the community benefit in response? How does this normally look?
Every project's a little bit different. And in this particular case, the only reason for the conditional zoning, as far as I could identify, looking back at the old file, was for that height modification. The property was zoned highway business already, and I, you know, and I think in this particular case, because the project, you know, is in close proximity to the airport, kind of helped serve that particular, you know, economic hub for western North Carolina, I think it was just deemed appropriate to go ahead and grant that additional height for that seventh story.
Thanks. I appreciate your being here, representing the developer tonight, and the questions that I have, my guess is that you're not authorized to respond to. Sure, sure, I appreciate it. Thank you. We recently approved a hotel renovation for downtown, and in so doing, created what is now known as the McKibben Standard, where the developer worked with the city and agreed as part of conditions for the hotel to provide living wages for his full-time workers, to source, to include local businesses in any sort of retail that's involved in the facility, to contribute to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the recognition that hotel wages are too often below median and don't provide living wage for people, and to advocate for an equitable redistribution of the occupancy tax in the area. And so, these are questions that I have tonight about this project as to the openness of the developer in coming together on these things.
Right. That's probably not anything that I could commit to.
This is what I figured.
It is.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Just a little bit more history, though. When this project was first conceived, the property was not in the ETJ. And then, they had, sort of the first iteration of this project, we had vested rights from the county. And then, when the property was brought into the city, for whatever reason, the zoning that was chosen sort of limited the height that wasn't consistent with some of the other adjacent structures there. So, I think that was part of our argument in getting the height variance in our previous approval. Just a little bit of history, but I'm sorry I can't commit to those other things.
Understood, understood. I ought to have communicated with your group earlier, I think. I do have concerns about the height, and they could certainly be ameliorated by kind of coming together with the community on some of these other things, but I'll have to think about how I'm going to vote on this tonight.
Thank you. Anything else I can answer?
Anyone else have a question for the applicant?
I just wanted to note that it's this, a couple people said it's a height variance, and I see it's actually an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for the increased heights. The variance is a little bit different, so I didn't want anyone to get confused.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I had already closed the public hearing, and we had, anyone else have any questions? Do I have a motion? This is the part where you have to make a motion or ask a question?
I agree that it would be nice to exact other conditions from the developer. Having already approved this in the past, essentially the same plan, it feels like it's a done deal, and it's just, it's a small expansion, relatively small expansion of the plans. So, I will move to approve the Highway Business Conditional Zoning Amendment, request to increase the size and number of rooms of a previously approved hotel development plan from 60,474 square feet to 71,367 square feet, and from 100 rooms to 108 rooms. With the submitted conditions, site plan, and elevations, and find the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and our adopted plans in the following ways. One, it provides appropriately scaled commercial infill development where there is existing infrastructure. Two, it supports the growth of the Asheville Regional Airport, consistent with the general aviation and commercial air traffic demands, as well as the operational needs of the airport. And three, it supports an economic development and community investment opportunity.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes our Public Hearings Agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Mayor for our new business items. Thank you, Shannon.
Six one, should listen. Okay. Here, do you want this? Oh, you need the list?
No, I got the list, okay. So, we interviewed candidates. We had narrowed down the candidates for Affordable Housing Downtown Commission and the Hub Community Economic Development Alliance, and we interviewed them this afternoon. Once again, amazing candidates, really, really hard, really, really hard to do. So, we appreciate it, and for the people that we don't choose tonight, we hope you continue to stay involved and that you will, you'll apply again. As Cecil was pointing out in the interviews, your name stays on the list, so you'll be automatically considered for the next opening, so stay involved, and thank you very much. So, the way we're going to do this is, actually, I'm going to flip this around a little bit. We had several people who dropped out of the interviewing process for the Hub Community and Economic Development Alliance, and we are going to propose to re-advertise for that one opening. So I would need, so I'm going to make that motion to re-advertise for the one opening for Hub.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any discussion about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so, now the way this is going to work, for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, we have two vacancies. So what I'm going to ask you to do is, we're going to go down, and we'll start with Keith. Is that okay?
That's fine.
And you'll name your two, and then we'll move down, and then we'll add them up.
I recommend Brian Bialik and Laura Collins for affordable housing.
I think you meant Barry.
Barry.
Yeah, yeah. And I vote the same, Barry and Laura.
Okay.
Ditto.
I just had one question about Barry. Is he a city resident? I noticed he has Skyline mailing.
He's a South Asheville resident.
But he's in the city limits? Okay, I wasn't clear. Well, in any event, I would like to vote for Laura and Richard, Laura Collins and Richard Fort.
Gordon?
Bialik and Collins.
And I will, Collins and Fort. So, that would tell me that Bialik and Collins will be appointed to the Affordable Housing. So, thank you very much. Downtown Commission, we only have one opening, so, and we, yeah, we interviewed four people, so, really, really tough. We love the passion for downtown, so stand on. So, now I'm going to start with you, Brian. So, just one.
Just one.
Just one.
Can I comment, too?
Please.
Sure.
I wish I could appoint, or we could approve all four of these. But I'm going to go with Franzi.
Okay.
I agree, the four folks we interviewed today would all be excellent on this. I could go on and on about these four. I'm friends with all four. But I'm going to choose Franzi.
And I would echo the sentiment and encourage anyone who doesn't make it through this screening, I wish we had this pool of applicants every time we appointed, to please apply to the other related boards or any future vacancies in this board. But I'm going to go with Franzi Sharon as well. Probably mutilating the last name, but...
It's, no, I think that's right.
I think this is the most difficult choice I've ever had to make on a board or commission. And I finally decided on my vote, just to veer as diversely as possible, so I'm voting for Fletcher.
I actually think we might need to expand the Downtown Commission if we're going to get this caliber of applicants on such a regular basis. And I hope all of these people do apply again. But I'm going to go with Franzi as well.
This was an extremely hard choice, as everyone mentioned before, and if we could appoint all four, that would be awesome, but we can't, and it seems as though Franzi has gotten the nod, but I'd have to go with Andrew Fletcher.
And I'll go with Franzi.
May I interject real quickly? You don't have to apply again if your application is on file, and when a new vacancy occurs, you're automatically concerned. Is it a year? For a year?
For a year, but then we write to see if they want to stay or not.
So you're recontacted in case you might want to continue to apply. Thank you, all of you.
Okay, that, you have mine. Oh, I'm sorry. That concludes our printed agenda. That is not a record. No, the record's like 23 minutes, but if, does anyone have any news announcements, anything, before we go into the public comment period? Okay, I have one person signed up to speak, Vicky Mith, and I see you there. If you, you will have three minutes. Please step forward, Vicky.
But you don't have to have signed up to speak during this.
You do not, no, you can, yeah. Maggie will. Pass them around.
Hi, my name's Vicky Mith. I'm with Just Economics, and I'm here on behalf of our campaign to improve the bus system, the People's Voice on Transportation Equality. As you may know, today we held a press conference to celebrate some of the campaign's accomplishments in 2015, to outline our priorities for 2016, to release the findings of a study done around the need for evening service done in partnership with UNCA, and to thank campaign participants and city leaders that have worked with us. I want to personally take a second to thank Councilwoman Mayfield for her years of dedication as Chair of the Transit Committee and working with us so diligently on this campaign. I wanted to come here tonight to focus on the number-one priority of our campaign in 2016, prioritizing evening service, which was identified as the second-highest rider priority after Sunday service in a 2013 study done in partnership with the city. In the transition to art from the old system, some of the routes that used to run till 10:00 now run till 6:30, 7:00 o'clock. Many transit-dependent riders lost their jobs and have had limited access to many of their basic needs. In our recent study, where we really tried to kind of drill down and focus on the specific needs around evening service, on which routes were important and where those needs lie, we surveyed both riders and business owners, and found that 100% of riders that were surveyed supported extending evening service, and a vast majority were willing to pay for it through increased fees. I think that's important to note, that these transit-dependent riders, who are often low-income, were willing to put skin in the game because this is important to ridership. 92% of riders surveyed reported that it would help them get to and from work. A majority of business owners reported that it would increase their customer base and their pool of potential employees. I've provided you with a summary of the findings, and the full report will be available on our website tomorrow. We absolutely understand that extending evening service costs money, and that this system is currently underfunded and needs a dedicated source of funding. But we also absolutely believe that it has to start with the will of the community and the will of city leaders to prioritize this as a need, so that we can work together to find the funding necessary to build a more sustainable and efficient transit system. So, as you go in, I'm here tonight to ask you that as you go into your council retreat this weekend still, is that right? Okay. That we, that you prioritize the needs of Asheville Transit, you consider Asheville transit-dependent riders, and that you prioritize looking for funding and doing everything that we can possibly do to extend evening service and lead to a more just and sustainable local community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. That's how you do it.
Mayor, can I just respond to that real briefly? Just, Vicky, thank you so much, and I just want to thank all of the people who've been involved in the campaign. I have enjoyed working with you as well. I think you've been really effective in moving our city's investment in transit forward, and I am committed, have committed, and continue to commit to work to increase those investments. The evening service that you just talked about is one of the priorities that has come up from the Transit Committee, I know, and we'll just continue to keep trying to fill that gap. Thank you.
I'll also note that in addition to, I really appreciate you...
I'll also note that, in addition to, I really appreciate you doing the survey work, it's very, very helpful to see that, that come in. I'll also point out that when the Chamber of Commerce did a survey of its members as far as what their number one needs were in regards to helping their businesses grow and thrive, transit was listed as number one, improved transit service. So, it's the ridership and the business community calling for this.
I think, very, very good work here, however, I just, I'm almost baffled by the, you previously said that riders lost their jobs, and, but they're willing to pay a little bit more for other services. I think I spoke with Councilwoman Mayfield earlier about trying to find other, other ways or the means of, of bringing more, more, more money into our transit system to provide these types of services. And as we go into our retreat, I can honestly say that I would be thrilled to raise the fees on the backs of the folks who I think who have the most skin in the game. I think that's deplorable. I'll just say that now, but I can't see that happening, and I won't support that at all.
Okay, are we?
Anybody else?
Yes, no, yeah, I just want to make sure everyone has, yeah. I, I mean, since I've been on council, we have systematically worked through the to-do list, so to speak, on transit, and leave it to the Transit Commission to tell us what the priorities are in working with the community, and I feel like we've done a good job of knocking out portions of that list. Cost is the biggest factor, I mean, the only reason the rest of the list isn't done already is because of the incredible cost of providing transit, which is, was one of the biggest things I learned when I got elected, was how much it, it costs, and it's, that, that has proven to be the one barrier, not, not the will of the council, the will of the council is there, and the will of the people is there. But thank you so much for your effort, and I think it requires a constant drumbeat on this to continue to get to the next stage and the next stage, so thank you. That was the only person I had signed up to speak tonight, and, but that doesn't mean anyone else. If you would like to, yes, please. This is the famous VJ. I'm so glad you're here to talk to us.
No, I figured as much. You guys haven't gotten any emails recently, have you? I apologize.
They're slowing, actually.
Well, yeah, well, we've, we've toned it down just a little bit.
Well, tell Maggie, our clerk, who you are, so we can introduce.
Good evening, my name is VJ Kapoor, I'm a, I'm a South Asheville resident, and good evening, Mayor, and members of council, thank you for the, for the opportunity to briefly speak with you. My comments are going to be around the 60 Mills Gap Road project, which I know has been, the decision's been delayed until April 26th. I, we just wanted to make a couple of comments here tonight. First of all, is to thank all of you for your, your patience, your interest in working with many of us in South Asheville who, who are concerned about this project, and obviously you have seen from the hundreds of emails you've received, it's struck a bit of a chord with the folks in South Asheville. What has also sort of happened to me in terms of my understanding, and what has particularly struck me about this, is that despite all of the rapid growth we're seeing in South Asheville, we don't yet have a, either a transportation or a planning plan for South Asheville generally, or even specifically this particular intersection and area, which is, you all know, 18,000 cars travel a day. And frankly, those of us who live in South Asheville need to step up, and we need to partner with you all, and we need to partner with city staff, and unfortunately, we've got to do it really fast, because not only is this project before you, but there's also a couple of other issues. We learned through this process that Duke Energy is looking to build a substation directly diagonal from this proposed project. I don't know how big that's going to look like, I don't know how big it's going to be, I know you all have some background in dealing with substations, they're, obviously, they're, they're very easy to deal with, I know, but, but we're going to have to deal with that, and that's one of the, one of the issues that we have. The other issue, which, which I know you guys love to deal with, is one of transportation and traffic, and with North Carolina Department of Transportation now sending out letters to folks who are living along Sweeten Creek about their preliminary environmental analysis, about widening the roads, we have concerns there, too, and we need to be at the table, we as residents, we as city council, because I'm going to dub this the mini I-26 if we don't. We're going to have big projects here, if you look at that topography, you know, it's hard to see five lanes without homes being taken, and we need to be up there in front of this process now while it's being taken care of. So, again, we sincerely appreciate your attention to this project, and, and all of the important matters that are facing South Asheville, and we look forward to partnering with you on this. So, thank you all for your patience and your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
And actually, before Dee comes back up, just to respond to VJ briefly, I just want to assure people, your neighbors who might be watching, that this is not just a delay for delay's sake, there is work in conversation that we're hoping to have, planning to have in this interim time, both with city staff and DOT, and trying to get some, get some forward movement and.
You're going to make our city attorney have a heart attack.
Sorry.
Well, we postponed a public hearing, and I was trying to hold back and, and not try to interrupt, but the public hearing on this has been postponed, and we shouldn't be talking about this particular project, so.
All right, so, but yes, it, yeah, and as the paper reported today.
As the paper reported, there are things that conversations.
All right. Is there anyone else? Yes, I think there was a handout, yes, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Priscilla Njai, and I started the petition for saving Walton Street Park and Pool. I just want to stand and say, I was born and raised in this community, in this city, and left and stayed gone for some years, and came back and sort of felt like I was in a time warp, due to the things, the process that I've seen, the processes, people not being engaged, and I sort of took an initiative instead of just complaining, to do something about it, whether it was to speak up, to empower other community members, so that Ms. Dee wouldn't be by herself in advocating. I know, at times, you have community members who come forth and may be considered as one who's grumbling and complaining, but the petition that we started, with it being the wintertime and all the snow outside, I know you're not thinking about the Walton Street Park, but with you going into retreat, I would like, I'm standing tonight to ask that you would seriously consider and have a critical conversation about what you plan on doing with Walton Street Park and Pool. I remember as a, as a young girl, before the hill was even cut down, the fair was being held there, going over to that park, learning how to swim, taking life-saving certification, that swimming pool, that area, even now, serves a lot of community members, community members who don't have the transportation to go and swim at Recreation Park, and we know that there have been probably no repairs done, at least I haven't heard of any, so we're asking that you would seriously consider in your planning and in your retreat conversation to renovate the park, renovate the pool. I know there's rumor that the pool may be taken away, and that, you know, we've asked questions over and over and couldn't get answers, and so that's why the petition was started, to bring about some attention, and so I thought I'd come out tonight, knowing that you all will be going on your retreat, to ask, and, and the petition that you seriously take into consideration. This coming Monday, the community, we are planning a meeting, and Mr. Roderick Simmons will be there, so that we can start a conversation about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I will just say, there are no plans to remove the pool, and I, I did see the petition, and it, and I know there was a conversation a couple of years ago, AB Tech wanted to try to build some access, and there, at that time, there was some, some sort of conversation, but that, from the council's perspective, was abandoned, that, that entire conversation. There's no active plan to remove the pool, but there, but maybe the city manager can speak to the review that Parks and Rec is doing of the Parks and Rec assets, and trying to look at where we are and what we need to do.
Yes, we're actually diagnosing the condition of the pools and putting together a wellness plan. We will complete that this spring, and I think Mr. Simmons will be happy to share that information with you, just what the status of that is, and when they expect the report back.
And that's an evaluation of what, what kinds of repairs are needed, and what the costs will be, and.
How to restore them and bring them back up to an acceptable standard for the community.
And I'll also note that there are placeholders in our capital improvement budget for the next five years, and three of those years, there are kind of placeholder numbers for pool repair and renovation that are there already.
So, I, I signed that petition as well, and I've been aware of your communications with Mr. Simmons, and, and I will be there as well on Monday to provide an informative view on the pool situation, and to help give some, some, some good information on that, so we'll definitely be, I definitely will go into the retreat with that on my mind as well, and hopefully, the information that you've got here tonight will help.
That makes me feel better. Thank you so much, because, I mean, when you hear rumors, you know, that they're getting rid, getting rid of Walton Street Park, or there was money that was previously for it, and it was used for something else, that, that makes the community angry, but I like to come and face people and ask questions, and that way, you have your facts straight, so I thank you for this time. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming down here tonight. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor, I'll try to be brief, I just want to follow up on what Ms. Njai said. My name's Dee Williams again. Basically, one of the things that I want to encourage council to do during the retreat is to think about community benefits agreements in a very proactive way, and I commend you for even bringing those up. That is the way that we got Mission Hospital to agree to ban the box. First of all, all businesses, and I do have a corporation as well, operate at the, with the permission of the citizenry, and therefore, when they are in a capacity to benefit the community, they should be called upon to do so. So, that is how we got Mission Hospital to agree to do what they did do. So, every time that a developer comes forward, it's not unheard of during a rezoning or other processes, I'm sure you're aware, to say, what you're doing, how is it going to benefit a community, especially a community like Livingston Street, Census Track 9, that is the only distressed census tract in Buncombe County. I was a field operations manager for 28 counties for Census 2010, so that information, the poverty rates and all of that, is something, when anybody builds in that area, as I've tried to educate Mission Hospital, it's an absolute duty for those of who, us who are cognizant and community activists to, not exact, I don't want to use that word, but we need to have a pertinent conversation. So, in saying that, that is how we're going to approach Mission Hospital, and we have. Toby Kay, who's the project director, who's left, that's a half-billion-dollar building, so he's agreed to put us in conversation, and we are meeting with Brass Fillingary, who's their construction manager at risk, and we're meeting with the Housing Authority and other interested parties. So, we would say that there is room to bring this conversation in the way of community benefits, kind of after the fact, but the fact that Mission is a good partner, and they're good corporate citizens, so I would, even with the pool, there's opportunities to help get those folks to help fund that. So, I would encourage you to do that, and to take advantage of those, those of us who, right now, right now, I guess my forte is construction management, was a highway/roadway concrete contractor, we did full demolition for Grove Arcade prior to renovations, so please know that, and know that there's always more than one way to skin that kid, and that's what we're looking at. We want to do something positive rather than complain all the time. So, even with that, the lone pool, that, too, we're looking at all of that, so just keep us in mind. We mean well, we might come across as escorbic, if you will, whatever, but certainly, we want to help. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, once again, City Council, Madam Mayor, Timothy Sadler, and I actually just wanted to share a thought that I had while Ms. Meath was making her comment about expanding a service to have longer hours in the evening. Public transportation is one of the most vexing problems a local government can face. I think that the number is like five to one in terms of the cost to the actual revenue that the system creates. Councilwoman Mayfield, is that, is that accurate, five to one?
Roughly, I mean, the figures are about 15% of our revenue.
Okay, so, just a thought that I had, you know, being that Just Economics is working with employers, hundreds of employers, you know, in the community, you know, what if we work together, the city, the city and the organization, to help market the passport program? You know, if we could get a handful of employers to come onboard with the passport program, that's going to bring residual income into, into the budget, which of course is the problem of expanding service for later hours, it's the operating budget, which is, it's, it's fixed, it's, so, we need more income to, to come into the system, you know, before expanding the service, is kind of my overall point, and, you know, if we can work together as a community to figure out how to bring that income in, you know, I'd really like to see that happen. Luckily, I'm a part of a committee with Ms. Meath, and, you know, I intend to bring that up with her there.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Good evening, I'm Carmen Ramos Kennedy, I'm here representing the Asheville Buncombe branch in ACP, and I initially came to in support of ban the box, and I understand the resolution was done earlier, thank you so much for doing that. This is a giant step towards people who have served their time to have a future, thank you for that. And I just wanted to follow up on something that Vicki Meath addressed for Just Economics. Just Economics is not advocating the raising of fees to pay for the evening service, but the question was included on the survey, so this just indicates how important it is to people, so we wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
For that clarification. All right, anyone else?
I have a quick comment about funding. I have been pushing for, and will continue to push for, an increase in our parking deck fees, because we are way too cheap for a tourist town, and that's a big source of funding for our transit system. We have a parking study that's ongoing now, we're going to get results in a month or two, I don't know the exact date, and we'll be discussing that idea, because that could be a big source of money to help expand the transit system.
Okay, we have a closed session, and so we have a closed session motion.
All right. I move that Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. Number one, prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. Law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 10A3. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318 111A1. Number two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between city and its attorney must be preserved. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318 111A3.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. And we will adjourn from the closed session.